All right, let me call this May 1st meeting of Hubbleboro Council to order. I hope you can get a sunshine statement.
I put notice that this meeting has been provided by NoSmile to Hubble Valley News in the same time. Posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and filed with the Borough Clerk as required.
Flag slips. Blood allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, in whose business we are interested.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah.
Mr. Fuller?
Yeah.
Ms. Hook?
Yeah.
Mr. Mackey?
Here.
Ms. Steeler?
Here.
Ms. Weaver?
Right.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Right. I will take a motion for resolution 2025-59 to retire from executive session with many attorneys on our pilot litigation. So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, so then I'm for those, there's no one online, but for the recording, we're about to go to executive session. Our meeting, the public part of the meeting will resume again at 7:00 p.m.
Evening everyone here in person and on Zoom. Welcome back for the first time to the May 1st meeting of Hopeful Borough Council. Council opened the meeting at 6 o'clock and has been an executive session speaking with several attorneys about some current pending litigation that we will address later this evening in our agenda. Now we're resuming the public part of our session with item 5. However, we'll take something a little bit out of order. We have some guests here tonight and I'm honored and delighted to be part of recognizing and congratulating a fixture in Hopeful Borough is Hopeful Valley's medical field, Dr. Sessano Holdcraft. We have a proclamation in her honor on her upcoming retirement. And I understand that there's some remembrance happening on Saturday organized by her friends and family with planting a tree as part of our Borough Park Cleanup this Saturday. So if you may would like to do a photo, get a copy of the proclamation, but if one had come up front, really delighted to recognize this. It's not a very photogenic area that we have here. So when we maybe come, what looks better? And does anyone want to take a photo?
Do you want to take a photo? Do you want us to grab some?
Yeah, we can do that. Let's go back.
What's a good background?
Go there, we could take a shot.
Yeah, so we can kind of have the logo behind us. Just so we don't, only thing we shouldn't do is trip over this court, so.
And then you guys, are we going down a little bit or?
Why, I can't because of electricity.
Camera, right here.
Kind of get everyone in here. Behind? Oh, we are standing apart, okay. Stand behind the desk. Thanks.
I was thinking that.
Yeah.
We have better back there than we're like.
Remember what I said about turning the lights on down there, which is on the downside of that. The water is in the center.
You look like my tummy.
So, you know, you're big, you get to that.
Lovely.
Good luck. Congratulations. Congratulations. On behalf of the people of Hopeful Borough, congratulations on your retirement and thank you so much for everything you've done for our community.
Thank you.
Bless, thank you so much. An honor and thankful I've been able to be here.
Moving to the next part of our agenda, item 6, the report of the Director of Public Works and Report of our Water and Sewers. Mr. Packing, do you have any questions for our Administrator at this point?
I have one question that you probably know about week bag pickup. Is it every Monday all the time all year? Okay, awesome.
It is a lot.
It's a lot.
It is a lot.
It is a lot.
Next item, on each of our meetings for the past year plus, we have wanted to make sure we had a consistent time to provide updates on the potential sale of our water system. If this is a topic that is not, or that is new to you, our website, if you go to Hopeful Borough's website slash water, you'll find lots of information here. And we are beginning to put together information to roll out to help everyone understand what the decision that we will be making on the November general election ballot. Tonight, we'll announce the first of a couple of planned information sessions we will announce soon will be on May 29th, Thursday. And we'll have information on our website about that soon. Also, we'll be providing information also about an advisory citizen and Advisory Board that we will convene this summer to help the borough with understanding the capital needs that the borough has in priorities. As we go forward, we'll have some opportunities and a need to look at what our community needs to invest in. And I'm looking forward to helping get a lot of input from our community and to what those priorities should be and what type of capital projects we should be thinking about and investing in as a community. Water team has also been working on our 10-year rate and capital plan and are looking forward to having some more information to start rolling out as the summer is going to be a very busy one with lots of information that we're going to try to get out in small digestive pieces with everything available on the website so that you can kind of consume at your pace and schedule. Again, with the first one that we'll soon announce to be on May 29th. Anything to add to that update from? Thanks so much. Next, we have several representatives and I'm thinking there's some good folks on this board that would be helpful in this committee as we go forward. And we'd like to have representations from a lot of our volunteer committees as we put this advisory board together. But item 8 is a presentation from our Economic Development Committee for their annual update. And I'm, as the semi ashamed former liaison, I have to say I'm really pleased that they're to have them here to do this. It's something that I think the group is supposed to be done and I'm really pleased that they're putting together to present. And welcome, we've got their Chair and Vice Chair good seeing you. Your floor is yours if you'd like to provide a bit of an update. I know that Council was receiving a copy of the, I believe, of the plan and really appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Absolutely. Pleasure to be here. Thank you for having us. So we have a wonderful, wonderful group of volunteers. I'd say just a very special diverse group that we have. We're fortunate to have Breon's fantastic Chair. I think over the last six months or so, we've been trying to kind of come down to the foundations, checking our charter and seeing what latitude that gave us to try to find our guiding principles and roles so that going forward we can have a little bit more direction as far as coming up with goals and initiatives and that sort of thing. So we kind of collaborated for quite a while on this mission statement and kept it relatively succinct. Hopeful Borough EDC is committed to enhancing the economic and cultural vitality of the borough via the following roles. Acting as a liaison between local businesses and town government by staying highly informed on specific opportunities and challenges facing our businesses and serving as their voice to the council. Number two, encouraging new businesses to start up or move into the borough by highlighting what makes Hope well a great place to run a business now and into the future. Number three, serving as an advocate and supporter of our local economy to the borough community and surrounding markets via public outreach and storytelling, emphasizing our town's specialness and unique culture. Number four, providing high quality policy advice to the council by functioning as a research and advisory body. And finally, number five, serve as a go-between to enable initiatives that cross public and private domains by collaborating with a variety of stakeholders and organizations. So I'll just summarize, I'm not going to just read verbatim because I hate people do that. We kind of defined some project planning terms that we're going to use internally just to try to hold ourselves accountable and stay organized. And we came up with a few objectives for the remainder of the year to pursue. We kind of did a little Google poll and voted internally on what the things were in the group that most interested us. Subjective number one, advocate for and celebrate existing borough businesses. And so we came up with a sort of couple of sub projects there. We're going to do a survey of 100% of whatever is known of the brick and mortar businesses in the borough, try to listen more than we speak and just see what issues settle up to the top just to be able to get a lay of the land and understand what the sentiment is about for everyone in town, all the business owners, who might be having some assumptions that aren't necessarily true. After that, we want to ensure that the survey participants receive a readout of those survey results at an evening and a half long meeting by the 1st of September. And finally, want to draft a report to summarize those findings as a presentation to you fine council people by October 1st. Objective two, we want to update the side street business directory signs to help some off-broad street businesses and also some community amenities, you know, whether it be just the park or basketball court, just things that people honestly don't know are there. Maybe stop their car and wander around a little bit and encourage patronage of some of the side street businesses. And we also wanted to explore the possibility of some formula business restrictions to protect our endeavors. Hopefully, you know, planning for success in terms of helping do our small part and encouraging the economic flourishing of the town and make sure that goes in a direction that protects the little guys. And that's about all I have for you.
Thank you. Thank you. One for both of us, two for organizing it this way. And I really do mean it, that you know, it's a long time ago and I take some blame for that as being your liaison in the past that should have happened.
We stand on the shoulders of giants.
Trip over prior failures. But anyway, thank you so much and much appreciated. And as with all our other commissions, I'll be reaching out, you know, for some input as we start kind of fleshing out this capital review advisory board. There might be some existing volunteers who are going to be one of our top group of people to lean on.
So we look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, next on our agenda is our first of several public comment opportunities. This first one is a general one and Mayor Council will take comments first from members of the public attending in person, then members of the public attending via Zoom. Speakers will be limited for this first one to five minutes. And as a reminder, we can't take any immediate action on any comment or issue. As a reminder, there will be a second public comment opportunity at the end of the meeting and we have one, two, three ordinances this evening. So if there is a particular ordinance that you would like to speak about, we're not going to stop before speaking in the public comment section, but it probably should be part of the public hearing on that particular ordinance and there will be an opportunity then as well.
Yeah.
Modernity is in the center.
So you're big, you get to that.
I feel like seven of them.
Lovely. Good luck.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
On behalf of the people of Hopewell Borough, congratulations on your retirement and thank you so much for everything you've done for our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, bless. Thank you so much. I'm an honor and thankful I've been able to be here.
Now moving to the next part of our agenda, I have six, the report of the director of public works and report of our water and sewers. Was Senator Packin paying us questions? For our administrator at this point?
I have one question that you probably know about week bag pickup. Is it every Monday all the time? All year? Ever? Okay. Awesome.
It is a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It is a lot.
Next item on each of our meetings for the past year plus, we have wanted to make sure we had a consistent time to provide updates on the potential sale of our water system. If this is a topic that is not or that is new to you, our website, if you go to Hopewell Borough's website slash water, you'll find lots of information here and we are beginning to put together information to roll out to help everyone understand what the decision that we will be making in on the November general election ballot. Tonight, we'll announce the first of a couple of planned information sessions we will announce soon will be on May twenty ninth, Thursday, and we'll have information on our website about that soon. Also, we'll be providing information also about an advisory citizen and advisory board that we will convene this summer to help the borough with understanding the capital needs that the borough has in priorities as we go forward. We'll have some opportunities and a need to look at what our community needs to invest in, and I'm looking forward to helping get a lot of input from our community and to what those priorities should be and what type of capital projects we should be thinking about and investing in as a community. Water team has also been working on our ten year rate and capital plan and are looking forward to having some more information to start rolling out as the summer is going to be a very busy one with lots of information that we're going to try to get out in small digestive pieces with everything available on the website so that you can kind of consume at your pace and schedule. Again, with the first one that we'll soon announce to be on May twenty ninth. Anything to add to that update from? Thanks so much. Next, then we have several representatives and I'm thinking there's some good folks on this board that would be helpful in this committee as we go forward. We'd like to have representations from a lot of our volunteer committees as we put this commission, this advisory board together. But item eight is a presentation from our economic development committee for their annual update and I'm, as the semi ashamed former liaison, I have to say I'm really pleased that they're to have them here to do this. It's something that I think the group is supposed to be done and I'm really pleased right that they're putting together to present. So and welcome. We've got their chair and vice chair. Good evening. Your floor is yours if you'd like to to provide a bit of an update. I know that council was receiving a copy of the, I believe of the of the plan and really appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Absolutely. Pleasure to be here. Thank you for having us. So we have a wonderful, wonderful group of volunteers. I'd say just a very special diverse group that we that we have. We're fortunate to have Breonna's fantastic chair. I think over the last six months or so, we've been trying to kind of come down to the foundations, checking our charter and seeing what latitude that gave us to try to find our guiding principles and roles so that going forward, we can have a little bit more direction as far as coming up with goals and initiatives and that sort of thing. So we kind of collaborated for quite a while in this mission statement and kept it relatively succinct. The Hope World Borough EDC is committed to enhancing the economic and cultural vitality of the borough via the following roles. Acting as a liaison between local businesses and town government by staying highly informed on specific opportunities and challenges facing our businesses and serving as their voice to the council. Number two, encouraging new businesses to start up or move into the borough by highlighting what makes Hopewell a great place to run a business now and into the future. Number three, serving as an advocate and supporter of our local economy to the borough community and surrounding markets via public outreach and storytelling, emphasizing our town's specialness and unique culture. Number four, providing high quality policy advice to the council by functioning as a research and advisory body. And finally, number five, serve as a go between to enable initiatives that cross public and private domains by collaborating with a variety of stakeholders and organizations. So I'll just summarize. I'm not going to just read verbatim because I hate people do that. We kind of defined some project planning terms that we're going to use internally just to try to hold ourselves accountable and and stay organized. And we came up with a few objectives for the remainder of the year to pursue. We kind of did a little Google poll and voted internally on what the things were in the group that most interested us. Subjective number one, advocate for and celebrate existing borough businesses. And so we came up with a sort of couple of sub projects there. We're going to do a survey of a hundred percent of whatever is known of the brick and mortar businesses in the borough. Try to listen more than we speak and just see what issues settle up to the top, just to be able to get a lay of the land and understand what the sentiment is about for everyone in town, all the business owners, who might be having some assumptions that aren't necessarily true. After that, we want to ensure that the survey participants receive a readout of those survey results at an evening and a panel meeting by the first of September and finally want to draft a report to summarize those findings as a presentation to you find council people by October first. I think objective two, we want to update the side street business directory signs to help some off Broad Street businesses and also some community amenities, you know, whether it be just the park or basketball court, just things that people honestly don't know are there, maybe stop their car and wander around a little bit and encourage patronage of some of the side street businesses. And we also wanted to explore the possibility of some formula business restrictions to protect our endeavors, hopefully, you know, planning for success in terms of helping do our small part and encouraging the economic flourishing of the of the talent and make sure that goes in a direction that protects the little guys. And that's about all I have for you.
That's all. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. One for offering guys do two for organizing it this way. And I really do mean it that, you know, good like it's a long time ago and I took it takes some blame but that has been your liaison in the past that should have happened.
We stand on the shoulders of giant.
Or a trip over prior failures. But anyway, thank you so much and much appreciated. And as with all our other commissions, I'll be reaching out, you know, for some input as we start kind of flushing out this capital review advisory board. There might be some existing volunteers or can be one of our top group of wonderful people to to meet up. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Next on our agenda is our first of several public comment opportunities. This first one is a general one and the mayor council will take comments first from members of the public attending in person. Then members of the public attending via Zoom. Speakers will be limited for this first one to five minutes. As a reminder, we can't take any immediate action on any comment or issue. As a reminder, it will be a second public comment opportunity at the end of the meeting and we have one, two, three ordinances this evening. So if there is a a particular ordinance that you would like to speak about, we're not going to stop before speaking in the public comment section, but it probably should be part of the public hearing on that particular ordinance and there will be an opportunity then as well. So with that, if you're here in person, please come up to the front or online, start pushing the raised hand button. We'll start our queue.
Good evening. I'm Lori Cleveland. I live at one eighteen Van Dyke Road. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. As a longtime member of the Hopewell community, I'd like to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude for your support of the Saraland area critical state concern resolution. Your resolution affirms the value of our region, not only for its rich history and natural beauty, but for its vital ecological importance. The Saralands are home to fifty seven state listed threat and endangered trees. More than eight hundred thousand residents in New Jersey and Pennsylvania depend on this region for some or all of their drinking water. This is not just open space. This is a life support system. And yet we are facing unprecedented environmental challenges. Our area has lost over one million trees in recent years due to a single invasive insect. You may already know that, but what's often overlooked is the hidden value of those trees. A single mature tree can absorb eleven thousand gallons of water in a single growing season. With the increasing frequency of severe storms and flooding due to climate change, every tree and every plant matters more than ever. The good news is we're not alone. There are many hands and hearts already at work. Local organizations like the Friends of Hopewell Valley Open Space, DNR Greenway Land Trust, Larchette Institute, New Jersey Conservation Foundation, Saraland Conservancy are actively working to steward our natural resources. Right here in Hopewell Borough Park this Saturday, a community cleanup is planned with Girl Scouts continuing the effort on Sunday. Hope to see everybody there. This kind of grassroots story is what makes Hopewell truly special. That's why I'm here tonight, not only as a concerned resident, but as a volunteer with the Hopewell Borough Economic Development Committee to share my deep hope and concern about the future of the native perennial plantings in our downtown planters. These plantings are far more than decorative. They're part of the living solution. Native perennials offer critical food and shelter for birds, butterflies and pollinators, whose numbers are in steep decline. They help rebuild what's been lost from our forests and understores. And perhaps just as importantly, they inspire. These planters show how anyone, even with just a flower pot, can contribute to biodiversity, beauty and resilience. Downtown Hopewell is not only a vibrant urban space, it also plays a crucial role in addressing the biodiversity crisis. Monarch butterflies are one prominent example of wildlife that depend on the complete lifecycle, I'm sorry, depend on habitat connectivity facilitated by native plants in our planters. These plants not only support the complete life cycle of monarchs and other butterflies, but they also provide essential food resources for many bird species as they move from one green space to another. By incorporating biodiversity friendly practices into our urban landscape, we help sustain the delicate balance of our local ecosystem. Yes, last summer's drought was hard, but native plants are adapted to survive those extremes. This spring, they've come back strong and we have a plan to help them thrive. Downtown Hopewell has launched a community led mocktail crawl fundraiser. Hope to see you all there to offset costs for caring for the planters, including a summer intern and provide the tools needed for ongoing maintenance. I've shared the budget with the mayor already and I'm happy to answer any questions. In fact, I brought some copies with me today. Here's my name. There you go. This is the budget. Here are some photographs. Thank you. Oh, here's. These were the planters before in the plantings. I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have. I've just been made aware of an alternate plan for the borough to take over the planters on Broad Street and planting annuals as that is what makes sense as they bloom all season. And next year, the borough would like to take over care of all thirty planters. Replacing these perennials with annuals, even partially, would not only erase years of community effort, it would also increase long term costs for the borough. Annuals need replanting and frequent watering every year, often by borough staff. Native perennials return on their own and require less water and maintenance once established. Investing a summer intern will not only lighten the load on public works, it will give a young environmentalist valuable hands on experience. The project has brought together students, volunteers, residents and local businesses. It sparks curiosity, starts conversation and builds community. It's a small effort with a big impact. I ask you to see these planters as not just another maintenance item, but as a symbol of who we are in Hopewell. A community that cares deeply, that leads by example and that works together to protect what we love. Let's keep growing that legacy. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Brianna Corrigan. I'm a business owner at Tens Broad Street. And I'm also the chair of the economic development committee. I just wanted to get up here to thank Lori Cleveland for all of her help in making the planter project get off the ground and get moving. Since two thousand and twenty three, we've been working on the planters and it's been so much fun. It's been a really fun, enjoyable community project that we've learned a lot during and I'm grateful for Lori taking feedback so well and continuing to improve the program, make changes to it and also I'm grateful everyone has helped us to complete the project, like from Ryan and Heidi to Sherry being our liaisons and and also with Doug and Reggie and everyone that's helped coordinate it, including Alan of Public Works. Like it was a lot. It's been a lot. It's been a heavy, but it's been an enjoyable volunteer work. So I just second everything Lori says and hope that we can all have a great experience of volunteers.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in person before we go online? Come on down.
That's Scott Fulmer, North Lanning Avenue, here representing the local harvest fair. And I just want to express my gratitude for putting the call out for volunteers in the Sunday newsletter. Thank you. I think we have a good contingent of volunteers. We have a few more spots, contests, a few contests. We have volunteers. We have a few that are vacant right now. Like the the homegrown. We need to volunteer for the homegrown and for the kids art and photography. Those are a few and also Kids Corner. That's all. I mean, really, we've done a pretty good job recruiting and I think we're gung ho for coming up on September twentieth. Just wanted to say thanks and give you an update.
Thank you. Thanks so much. I'm going to go to our online list. June, you will be first. I'm going to promote you to a panelist.
Can you hear me?
I can. Give me one second. I can see you, but the room cannot. So I'm going to just configure our screens here. One. One bit could just. There. So we can, we can see and hear you. So sorry for the delay.
Thank you. No problem. My name's Qinyu Shuang. So I attended the initial meeting about the emergent situation with the water, our Hopewell Borough water supply. That was about a year ago in July and at the time the council said that in addition to submitting for proposals for bid, that we would also be pursuing the reparation of some of the wells that are our current assets that are available to us as a water supply. So it was in August of last year that the council received the DEP grant for two point three five million to make the renovations or I guess filtration system for number four and number six. And so that was approved in early August, August second. And then it was stated at the time that the council could move forward with planning and design the following week. So I was wondering if you could share the status of what's happening with the application of that grant to do the remediation.
And I just want to be kind to your time. Will there, you have other questions or comments or I don't want to just launch into an answer and cut you off time wise. So is, do you have, will there be other questions following up on this?
Yeah, that was really, I think we talked about it a little bit at the council meeting two months ago. But I, I wasn't really clear about the actual answer. So I'm still trying to understand on behalf of our Hopewell Water Alliance, what the status of the the grant is.
Okay. Thank you. Dave, you want to, sure. I know there's a lot of update there.
No, there's not. But, but we can, I mean, we did go over it before and we'll go over again. So just one clarification, we, we did not say that we could begin planning and design in a week after we got that grant approval. There must have been a misunderstanding. But let me just explain the process again. So we received notice from the DEP, New Jersey DEP, that the grant application had been approved in August of last year. That money actually comes, it's federal money that comes originates with the US EPA. The money, my understanding is it's actually been for not just our grant, but about thirty, I think it's thirty three million that grants was actually transferred to the DEP last year. So it's in the bank is what they've told us. The next step in that process is the New Jersey DEP has to issue a grant agreement with Hopewell Borough that has all the terms and conditions on how that grant is going to be used. Until we have a grant agreement for the DEP, we can't proceed with anything. The grant, and I'll back up a little bit, the grant covers the cost of planning and design and also permitting. It also covers the cost of actual construction of two treatment systems, one at well number four, one at well number six, and also a treatment system building at well number six, which is needed to house the new systems. The way the DEP has structured it is the grant is, the grant agreements are done in two phases. The initial phase is the planning, design and permitting. The way that works, and by the, I'll just say that we have not yet gotten a grant agreement from the DEP. So we reached out to them in April, I believe, to check on the status. It may have been March.
March.
And to confirm, just to find out what was going on, but also to just confirm that we want to make sure that grant is still available. And if it's needed and they confirmed that was true and they moved it to the bank. So there's, right now, we've received assurances that the grant is still available to us. They had still not worked on a grant agreement. We saw a draft form that they used as a standard one. It's about sixty pages long, it's a long, complicated document. Months before they just showed us one so we could get an idea of what it would look like. Apparently, they're still working on the process of these grant agreements. I'm not sure why. I think they just maybe don't quite have the staff to move these things as fast as they'd like to. So they said, you'll be hearing from us in the next few weeks with the grant agreement. So the process would be get the grant agreement, we would execute the grant agreement. Now they bifurcated the project into the planning and design and permitting phase and the construction phase, et cetera. So there's an initial grant agreement just for the planning, permitting and design. Once we receive that, then the next step would be for us to put out a request for proposal to engineering firms to find a suitable candidate for the planning, design and permitting. That's funded by the grant. So we can't do that until we have a grant agreement in place. And basically, we put out RFP, we get bids, we bring the numbers and the bids back to the DEP. They're reviewed and, and you know, they presumably have to approve it. And you know, at this point, the grant was based on an estimate of the planning and design and the construction costs. You put out an RFP, you don't know what the numbers are actually going to be, but my understanding is that, you know, there's some flexibility in the grant to account for that. So that, that would be the next stage. So in other words, until we have a grant agreement in place that's executed between the borough and the DEP, we can't move forward on the RFP for the planning and design. We expect that the planning, design and permitting process altogether, mostly the longest part of the process is for well number six because of its proximity to a stream corridor, because of wetlands that are very close by, a number of other regulatory hurdles. The planning, design and permitting could easily take a year to complete. Once that process is completed, then the DEP would issue a separate grant agreement for the construction phase of the project, assuming that we're, that's, this is assuming that we don't sell the system. And then you would go forward with it. But the idea is you have to have not only the design complete, but also the permitting. So wetland permits, anything else you have to do before you put it out to bid for the construction, because otherwise the construction company doesn't have the specifications for what they're doing. So it's a long process. I would say overall, it's about a two year process between planning, design, permitting and construction. The construction shouldn't necessarily take that long. You have to put that out to bid. You have to review the bids, you have to word the contract. This is all how memory works. But at this point, until we have a grant agreement for the DEP, we can't move forward with the RFP. The second thing I'll point out, which we talked about before, but we can proceed in theory with the planning, design and permitting and not have, there's no financial consequence or penalty if we decide to sell the system and we've expended a certain amount of money toward that planning and design. That is not true with the construction part, which is why we, it's they bifurcated it into two different phases. The way the federal law works under an executive order that was signed years ago. If, if the federal government funds a capital project for a public asset and that public asset is then sold to a private entity, then you have to return to the federal government the value, the depreciated value at the time of sale. So but I thought the DEP broke it up into two phases. They assured us that we could proceed with the planning and design phase. So we are waiting for them. The law has been in their court for some time. They say we reached out before. They said we should be seeing something soon. Reach out again and check in with them. That's where the process is.
And David and, and talk to them. It's, we, we express our desire to move forward.
Is that correct? Well, right. And, and yeah, and also just, you know, and they know this and they're working with us, but just to make sure that there's no misunderstanding that, you know, we have a referendum on the sale of the water system. If that rather than fails, obviously we need the grant. So we want to make sure that we have this.
Yeah, but there's, there's nothing that the borough has done or asked them to pause or stop. We've just been asking to continue and move forward and at the same time, get assurances that there wouldn't be risk for this first component.
Right.
And secondly, that thankfully, the funds we believe are, I would say, in pocket, not ours, but in Trenton's and not perhaps at risk to something that's happening in Washington.
Right. As far as we know, I mean, I'm watching the papers anxiously just to see if there's any evidence of it, but so far they've assured us that that money is safe and it's in the bank and it's secure. So borrowing up all of it. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. So since August, the council reached out in March to find out what the status was and did they say when that would be turned around?
What they, I don't remember the exact words, but I think they said in the next few weeks that we would be here in front of them on the grant proposal. They were still working, or the grant agreement, they're still working on some new process. They, we're not the only grantee. There are a bunch of other systems that are in New Jersey that are all getting awards under this. I think we may have been the first or second one to actually apply. So it's a, it's a new grant program for them in terms of the execution side of it. So that's what they said. So.
Thank you. Yeah, the observation is just that the council moved very rapidly to getting a a bid for sale, and yet this grant for the um the remediation of the wells that we have has moved very slowly, so I was curious also about the intention of the council um to proceed with um with doing the treatments.
Well, I think it's important to understand that this is a state administered grant, it's a state agency.
I meant the council's, I the council's effort, yeah.
No, I I we we I think we we hear what you're saying, and the the implication is that we're not trying to get this grant, I think that's incorrect, I'm sorry that it looks that way. We've taken every effort we can, um we wish we controlled these things, um in in looking forward at what it looks like to wanna run a water system, um these grants are not a given, uh they take a lot of effort. Um a lot of what effort went into getting to the point where um with this current one grant. Uh those efforts continue with discussions with I Bank and these other uh places on a on a regular basis, so just that one email's not the only interaction with these overlaying groups at DDP, uh certainly who administer these projects, um so while it is a lot of work, while there's a lot of risks to these grants that we continue to do it. Um and I I, you know, I wish there was a way to show you that more than there is, but ultimately um we cannot control the state, we can follow with them, we can ask, uh we can ask for assurances that it's still allocated to us and still available, and that assure them that we're still interested and and want to receive the funds and that there's not a risk to us to obtaining the funds, uh to regardless of what our community decides in the end.
But I also want to add something, which is that the grant was awarded in August, there was a lot of before that that led to that grant, it didn't just, I think it was August prior year that they announced that this grant was available, it was the first we'd ever heard of, it was a brand new program. And we waited for them to several months, I think it was six or eight months, to actually put together the grant application process, because they hadn't worked that out. And basically, the moment they reached out to us and and, you know, gave us a formal, well, they actually, they sent us a questionnaire uh with information about our system, the basic information that they would need to see if we were eligible for the grant. We received that, and that was, you know, a pretty detailed questionnaire. Um I'm pretty sure we turned that questionnaire back within a week or ten days at most, which included a lot of work on our and putting together a whole system summary with all the technical aspects of the system, all the information that they needed, um summarizing the work that we had previously done on the treatment system. Uh this is during twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three on preliminary design. Um all the other technical information that went with that, so actually, we've been working on this process now for over two years. Um and we turned that around right away, we had a phone call with them to go over the information to find out if there's anything else that they needed, just that the application was exactly what they needed, they wished all of our other applicants had done the same. Um and then, and I'm trying to remember when that was, but I think that may have been in March. And then it was in August when we finally got the message that the grant had been awarded, so when the ball was at our court, we moved very fast and we put all of our resources into it, and I want to make that clear. So the notion that somehow we're moving rapidly towards sale of the system, which doesn't seem rapid to me, and somehow slow walking this is just not correct.
David has a question. Well, I appreciate that you followed up with the DDP, you know, after eight months, I I that is a great update and helpful to hear, I thank you.
But, thank you so much.
Who wrote the grant?
What what the proposal?
Yeah.
Well, the team put together the proposal, I did a lot of it. But no, I mean, we we put it together, ran it through the engineers, everybody, yeah, but
I think there's a lot of time, energy and money invested in just applying for the grant.
Yeah, not too much money, fortunately, we didn't have to do, but but yeah, no, we we were, you know, we knew it was coming, we were waiting, but we didn't know what kind of information they needed, and actually, the the beauty of it was, and this is very much, I commend the DDP for this, it was a very simple process. They basically said, give us all this technical information about your system and what your needs are and what you think this would be. Oh, that, oh, that's right, I'm sorry, we had to hire the engineering firm
Yes.
to do the actual cost estimation, right, which was critical, so that that wasn't
But it's my my point, like the borough was vested into the grant even before we knew we were gonna get it, so I think that shows a certain level of dedication to
Right, right, and then we handed all that, we gave them everything they needed, and then they basically took that and and actually wrote a proposal to the federal, to the D the EPA, uh and then turned it around, so uh it was a, it was a collaborative process from the beginning.
Yeah, that would be
Well, I I did not believe that you still had comments there, Judy. We've had it, well exceeded our five minutes here, but I I I think I, we had thought that you had to finish your your
We should be fair enough.
Um I have anyone else in person or or hands, nothing any hands online, um I'll take a motion to close the first uh public um speaking opportunity?
I'll second.
Sherry's got it.
Okay, um next on our agenda um is me being able to swing my eyes to see the right button to make the slide full screen, and I will not be able to do that. Uh yes, um these are, these are weak glasses, anyway, so we we now, um item ten, a minutes from our April third meeting, which was in our packet. Second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We could have abstention perhaps? Opposed? So opposed and then two extensions on this one. Yeah.
Yes.
All right, uh next item is item eleven, this is the second reading of public hearing on ordinance eight ninety-four, which was carried from our April third twenty twenty-five meeting, um Reggie could read it by title again?
An ordinance of the Borough of Hopewell, County of Mercer, New Jersey, regarding the borough's sanitary sewer system and grease traps specifically, and remending chapter seventeen of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Hopewell, nineteen seventy-five.
All right, um brief explanation as we get um into this ordinance, if you recall, we've carried this particular ordinance um for several meetings with the considerable divisions on uh the need for and changes to our grease trap regulations, those are the devices that essentially protect our public sewer system from fats and oils in drains, particularly in restaurants. And um between uh that meeting and this one, we continue to do some more work on it, we will continue to reopen the meeting uh uh for public comment, but I will just suggest um that in light of the additional discussions that we've had um between some of our businesses and work that Doug has done uh towards an alternative solution that perhaps that after public comment that uh I'll seek a motion to um um kind of sunset this particular ordinance, and Doug, you want to maybe briefly go through the alternate proposal that might be coming uh forward
Sure.
in a future ordinance?
Yeah, so in June, uh we'll have an alternate uh ordinance. And what we found is, working with uh, you know, with uh Sherry and Anthony, um we um we came up with a way to found a vendor that is a C uh class two uh sanitary sewer operator, and they do the um they do the inspections, and they can do the inspections for us for two hundred dollars. Um they come into doing other municipalities, I followed up with other other municipalities. Um she certified the particular person that we're looking to work with, she certified to do these inspections, will satisfy all the requirements of the Board of Health. And with her certification and her training, she's also also able to um assist the restaurant owners in different practices that they can they can use to um improve the improve the workability of their of their grease traps, so uh what we're proposing is, and you'll see it in on in June, is that the municipality will pick up the cost of the initial inspection, uh the two hundred dollar fee. Again, you know, we're trying to protect our system, so you want to encourage everyone to participate. Um in the event that there has to be a reinspection, that fee will be a hundred fifty dollars, and that will be charged to the to the restaurant through their through their sanitary sewer bill. Um but we don't anticipate any issues with any addresses, you know, a lot of issues and a lot of concerns that our restaurant owners had, and uh we think it's a good uh a good path forward. Does that sound right? Anything else? Anthony?
Yeah, I just
I just wanted to point out, I mean, I think it's, this is, I mean, thank you and and thank you, Sherry and Anthony, because this is an example of, and we had a problem that we had to deal with, but we had to regulate it, I mean, the existing code wasn't really sufficient. We know we've had issues with sewer backups, we had to do something about it. The question is, how do you do that in a way that's the least burdensome to our businesses? How do you accomplish the goal of making sure that the grease traps are working properly, the systems are working properly, but not burden them with another huge cost that they don't want to bear, and this took three people going the extra mile to go out there and look at all the options again and find one that worked really well that was cost effective, because the other problem was when the old, it's a new ordinance, the DDP said, well, we have to have it inspected by a licensed plumber, not specifying what the nature of that inspection should be, and we know from these one person's comments last week, they, thank you, um that, you know, you got an estimate of fifteen hundred dollars, depending on the scope of what you do, so there there was uncertainty, there was a real fear about the cost. This solves several things, not only does get the inspection done by somebody who's competent at a at a reasonable cost, and the borough's willing to absorb that cost, uh at least for the initial inspection, but it also is clearly defined what needs to be done, it's taken care of by a professional. So the standards are clear, the objectives are clear, and you have the additional benefit of outreach for restaurants to help them sort of, you know, with best management practices to optimize the practice, so I just think, um I just wanted to thank all of you who were listening, other than staying in my lane but peering over the barrier and seeing what's going on, but I just it's an example of what we should be doing as a government, where we go the extra mile to find a solution that really works. And I just commend you.
We're the explanation part of this, we'll now open the uh reopen um to the public for any comment um on this ordinance, and then um perhaps seeing none um in person or online, I'll see a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance.
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, um and I guess I'll I'll ask for a motion to sunset or vote down? What is
Yeah, but I'll I'll entertain the the motion I've seen this through.
I will make a motion to to re- remove or
Sunset?
Disapprove.
To disapprove, I will
Reject.
I will make a motion to reject the current
Do you have a second?
Grease trap ordinance.
I also will roll call.
Mr. Pollard?
Yes.
Ms. Hook? So I'm saying yes to not approve it.
Right, right.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Lennigan?
Yes. No, um I have not yet used my veto as a mayor, and I'm just gonna
But this still protects us in the event that something
Well, we have so
Well, that's what the next, we'll go for next one.
There is not, yes, the the new ordinance is not, is being written, it will be introduced
Okay.
we expect to, uh that are next to you.
True, true. The restaurant.
Yes. Our next item, our next public hearing, I just
All right, great, thank you.
We'll keep the the chatter of the desk to a minimum so we can uh continue here. Uh item twelve, ordinance number eight ninety-six, second reading in public hearing on our cap bank ordinance, Reggie could read by title?
For the Borough of Hopewell, County of Mercer, calendar year twenty twenty-five, ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. NJ S eight forty A, colon, four dash four five fourteen.
Now, I think we got our explanation last time by Doug, but we do have our CFO here this evening, so Dave, if you could introduce yourself for those watching at home or here who don't know you, but maybe you can give the short explanation of this one.
Thank you, Mayor.
My name is Diane McDaniel, I'm I'm the CFO, and uh we do this ordinance every year um to uh cap or save um the extra spending power, doesn't mean that we're gonna use it, but we always um have the option if we need it next year, it's a housekeeping item we do every year.
I do, thank you. I will then um open the meeting to the public for public hearing on ordinance eight ninety-six. If you're here in person, come up front, you're online, push the raise hand button. Seeing none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance eight ninety-six, so move, second? Do I have a second? Second, um I got Anthony, he won that one. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Okay, I propose, no, all right, um I'll take a motion to adopt ordinance eight ninety-six. So move, I heard David, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Deb is the second.
Mr. Pollard?
Yes.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler? Yeah, Ms. Weaver?
Yeah.
Ms. Lennigan?
Yes.
Okay, uh next up is our final public hearing, uh well, actually it's not, that's final ordinance tonight. Um ordinance eight ninety-seven, second reading of public hearing on our Shade Tree Committee Reorganization Ordinance. Reggie?
An ordinance of the Borough of Hopewell, authorizing a general improvement, certain improvements to eat in place.
I've booked, so we're on eight ninety-seven. One less. Let's see where
I was trying to win the bet, right? An ordinance of the Borough of Hopewell, County of Mercer, New Jersey, regarding the advisory Shade Tree Commission and amending chapter two of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Hopewell, nineteen seventy-five.
So now that I know that we're we're, Reggie voted, I'm gonna take a very long explanation. Doug or Sherry want to briefly remind everyone what this does generally? Wait, you're you're a shade tree, right?
Yes, yes.
I just asked her to shoot so many things, I'm very
This generally updates the founding ordinance for the Shade Tree Committee. It corrects some language, it allow, it adds a few members, um because we're very busy these days of looking at Beth back there. I think Beth is hoping someone takes over the secretary role, but she doesn't know, we're not gonna ever let her leave. And so it's it's it's, housekeeping is a good term for it, just to to bring it up to speed and give out some new members. Leave me, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you so much, um I will now open the meeting to the public on ordinance eight ninety-seven.
Hi, I'm Beth Mibow, and I just want to thank you all, I know you're really busy, but this is a great improvement for our committee and the opportunity to get some more members and some little tech savvy could bring us some more trees. So it will only enhance our goal of getting more trees to plant here in the borough, so thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we, and to the actual appointees and the volunteers on this committee who have been acting as if they thought they were appointed, um much appreciated, and I know we have a couple people lined up that I remember interviewing months ago and ready to to finally have an official spot for them, so um thank you for all of your work, um which could unless there's anyone else, I'll seek a uh looking to speak, I'll seek a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance eight ninety-seven. Do I have a second? So it's all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll now seek a motion to adopt ordinance eight ninety-seven. Sherry, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second?
Mr. Pollard?
Yes.
Ms. Hook? Yeah, Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Lennigan?
Yes.
All right, our next two items are first readings, which means that we will have our public hearings at our June meeting. Uh first one is ordinance eight ninety-eight, uh which is um some road projects, Reggie, if you could?
An ordinance of the Borough of Hopewell, authorizing as a general improvement, certain improvements to eat in place, Iggy Avenue and North Wally Avenue, and appropriating two hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars, therefore, from the NJ DOT fiscal year twenty twenty-five municipal aid program grant funds and capital improvement.
Thank you, um Doug, you want to take the honors on this one?
Sure, so uh we received the grant uh for two seventy-two uh five hundred, which is actually the price of of to do the work, the construction cost. So uh we're gonna use the grant, you know, for the funding, obviously, but we're asking for two eighty-two, five, ten thousand dollars for anything that might come up during the uh during the project that we would have to address outside the grant, so basically, you know, the grant funds the entire project.
Excellent, so we don't have really a lot of soft costs to go with this one?
No.
Just basically million, million, nine million, that's
Yeah, and what, what we do is if we have any money left over from the uh or if the bid's coming lower, we've been applying the asking for those soft costs. And what, what we do is if we have any money left over from the, or if the bid's gonna be lowered, we've been applying the, asking for those soft costs back for engineering and inspections, and they've been pretty good, so.
And remember, it's still early, obviously, we have to allocate things, you know, work up the project documents and bid them out. But ballpark for people who live on these streets, what they might expect is.
Probably the early fall.
So this this could be a this year thing.
Probably be a this year thing.
Excellent, yeah. Excellent. With that, I'll take a motion to introduce ordinance eight ninety eight for the capital projects on Aggie, North Lanning and Eaton Place. I heard David is first. I heard the second.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Hook? Yeah, Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yeah.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Can I ask one question though? Is it Iggy or Aggie?
Iggy.
What?
Iggy.
Iggy?
Because Linda Wholefish, her grew up around here, her husband grew up in this town.
It's Iggy.
It's Iggy. That's what he said.
I just thought it was Aggie by all time.
Isn't that like Iggy Pop?
Yeah.
But that's not easy, no, it's Aggie and I thought it was.
Well, I've told it's Iggy.
She's, okay, and her version is.
It's Iggy, like Iggy Pop.
Like Iggy. Iggy.
But there's no I in it.
Okay, but that's different, see, I used to call it Iggy.
That's my daughter's name.
Like a street character, I would say. Thank you, and we'll consult our Hopewell historians and the coming weeks to put this base. But I I'm very curious what the real answer is.
I know.
I know.
Our next item, item fifteen, other per reading ordinance eight ninety nine.
Did we vote on that, Reggie?
Yeah.
No, sorry.
We did, she asked the question after.
Yeah.
An ordinance of the Borough of Hopewell to provide for a one-time stipend to the Borough Administrator to correct twenty twenty four salary under payments.
Thank you, I'll do the explanation of this one. In the fall, we did, we corrected our salary ordinances and we honestly just didn't do it right. Maybe we goofed up the date, so this will allow us to correct that that oversight. And allow us to actually have rectoactively corrected our salary for administrative position in the way that we intended. I'll take a motion to introduce eight ninety nine. Either.
She could have it on second.
Alright. So far.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Right. Next, we've got, you know, these are not, it's not an ordinance technically, we do have a public hearing here. So item sixteen, public hearing and adoption of our twenty twenty five municipal budget. Diane, if you and Doug, let me know how you want to order things, if you want to. Present and explain things first before before we open up to the public, please.
Yeah.
And when you're ready for those slides.
Yeah, why don't you just throw the slides up, we'll start there.
I made.
They only have a few slides.
I made some big promises about putting up these slides up on the screen and. Should do it, be one second here.
Not using.
It's all he's gonna do until someone's watching, then he can't do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is just a comparison from twenty five, twenty three to twenty five, I guess I shouldn't put it that way, but anyway. Twenty twenty five is all the way over on the left. Okay, so the blue is twenty twenty five and then we work our way backwards, so. Down to twenty twenty three, so this year's budget is four point five one. Last year was four point three five and four point one out. Back in twenty twenty three, so they were looking at about a six percent increase last year, three percent increase this year. Okay? Uh, the next one, our twenty twenty five tax rate, we have a two point five percent increase. That brings us to point seven seven four. We had a three and a half last year. Which brought us to seven point seven four nine and we had a four. And twenty twenty three, over three two, moving in the right direction. The other thing we did last year is, you know, we retired a lot of our, we had some debt on the books that we retired, so you can see the impact of that and making our payments. Our debt ratio in twenty twenty three was two point five, twenty twenty four is two point three six. And in twenty twenty five, it's it's down to two point four one, so again, moving in the correct direction there. Diane, and then we just have. Couple highlights on the budget. As I mentioned, we have a two point five percent increase this year. The budget overall is up three percent. But some of the things that we had to include in that was a seventeen percent increase for our healthcare benefits for our employees. The twenty twenty five budget reflects zero reductions in services, so. You know, we didn't reduce any, any service to get to that number. Within that three percent and that two point five cent increase, we've added a hundred fifty thousand dollars in capital projects. Availability to, capital funds available to us to do capital projects. And as we spoke about last year, you know, we're trying to get more to a pay as we go versus bonding and borrowing money for everything, so. That alone is is probably close to four cents increase, so just by, you know. Really wanting our dollars, Diane and I have been working on that and really, you know, trying to get back to a zero-based budget type of situation, looking at what we spent in the past and, you know, really, really zeroing on it, so. The good news is you can do things like this, the bad news is you don't have any fat in your budget, so you really need to, you know, maybe it makes it a little bit more difficult, you know, for us to manage, so. I think Diane will agree with that, right?
I agree.
Okay. So we have a lot of funded projects. We've done very well on grants, so we have railroad station, you know, we're doing the finish in the final phase of that, so that'll be, that'll be started. Art Avenue is underway, we're doing the complete length, Art Avenue. And as we just mentioned, we're gonna be doing North Lanning, Aggie and Iggy. And Eaton Place, okay? Some of the other things that we funded. We, for our sanitary sewer, you know, we have a lot of infiltration. Last year, I think we did about sixteen manholes on each broad, so we'll just keep pecking away at it. Doing thirteen will be about fifty thousand dollars. You know, so let's just keep pecking away at it and getting the manhole, the castings done.
Well, I had a couple important facts. Everyone wants to know, a set is worth a penny's worth thirty one thousand seven hundred and ninety one dollars. And this budget, like Doug said, it's a two point five cent increase or three percent increase. An average home in Hopewell Borough is valued at four hundred thousand. The increase on average home would be about a hundred dollars a year or twenty five dollars a quarter. In this budget, we anticipated slightly higher surplus than last year, but we still follow the fund balance policy adopted by the Borough Council. So we're still in keeping with that. And as Doug indicated, it reflects a zero reduction in services, so that's excellent that we could achieve that. And a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in capital improvement fund. Goes to fully fund projects like we did tonight with the introduction to the road project without issuing debt. And as we talked about, the debt ratio is coming down, the debt, as the debt payments, I think twenty thirty is when we'll really see a significant. If we can keep. Totally, fully funding the capital projects, we should be in a really good ratio at that stage, so.
And that means our bond rating.
Yeah.
Other things.
As well as our surplus. I mean, I know our surplus is high, but if you read our bond rating, which I read today a little bit, it talks about, you know, over fifty percent of your, your budget should be. Funded by surplus, I mean, that's excellent. And we are, we achieved that, so that's, that's great.
Our, our interest rate's low.
Yeah, the rate is low, exactly.
All good.
If, if we have to borrow.
If we have to borrow.
Right. So we're confident that this budget provides the goods and services needed to operate the borough and to continue to fund the capital projects. Such as the railroad station and Public Works Project and all the road improvement jobs, so. And I thank everyone for all their help, we got to meet with everyone, everybody gave us their input. And I appreciate that. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, maybe I'll just start with any questions, the comments from council or our, our team. I'll then open this rare, one hearing, a resolution that has two votes and a public hearing in it.
May.
But, so I'll now open the meeting to the public. For questions and comments at a public hearing on our municipal budget. Not seeing anyone in person or any hands raised online, so I will take a motion to close the meeting to the pub. This, so it's the public hearing. Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B is the resolution twenty twenty five sixty. Can I just take a motion, do we actually have to read the title?
You don't have to.
Alright, I'll take a motion, budget read by title only, item B, resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty.
Oh.
Do I have a second? We have to roll call these or?
Yeah.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Hook?
Yeah.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Uh, next, resolution twenty twenty five to sixty one, which is the self-examination of the twenty twenty five municipal budget. So. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sharon, right?
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Hook?
Yeah.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Alright, filing a little bit seems to actually take effect of doing this resolution twenty twenty five sixty two adoption of the twenty twenty.
I'll move. I'll second.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Ms. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
I again want to thank our CFO, Diane, and Doug, and everyone involved in in putting this together. No one's happy about any increase, but unfortunately compared to what we'll see with other budgets that we pass through, our school increase will be seven cents this year. That will have an impact. Every dollar has an impact, but we're happy to. Increase the rate of increase and we are looking forward to continue to do so, so Doug, Diane, thanks so much for that. Next, we have our consent agenda, just a few, couple of comments, we have a resolution. To ask our attorneys to remove ourselves or take action, to remove ourselves from the current pilot litigation. We have our annual stipend for local municipal alliance. Our agreement with our search company for our administrator search. We just earlier in the evening corrected the ordinance for shade tree, then we have the ordinance, the resolution that will add the members back to it. We have an administrative item for the license for our. One cannabis operator who may be finishing up their work and opening at some point. And then an agreement with a pigeon and pigeon as part of our actions taken on the existing litigation with Pennington. And Hopewell Borough challenging a pilot that Hopewell Township has done on Scotch Road. We have the need to bring in, there won't be much for them to do, but a special outside counsel for that. I'll take a motion unless anyone wants to pull anything out for discussion or question.
Yeah, I just have one correction that I apologize I should have said earlier for the shade tree. I don't know if this is a matter of, like, I'm headed, put her back in, but Zora officially resigned. So she shouldn't be appointed as a member, that should be an open spot, so do you need like an additional recommendation?
Can we pull that motion from the consent? Do the other ones have maybe Sherry bring a motion for that one amended to not reappoint the member who's not looking to be reappointed? Is that fair?
Yes, correct.
Alright, so let me take a resolution or a motion, excuse me, for sixty three through sixty five, omitting sixty six and then sixty seven and sixty eight.
I'll do that.
Do I, Deb, do you have a second?
Who was second, I'm sorry. Um, Mr. Fuller?
Yeah.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Now I'll entertain a motion on twenty twenty five sixty six, hopefully from Sherry with the, what needs to do, so. So maybe you move the, move the resolution but with the amendment that it needs and just.
Yes, move, so I moved the resolution with the deletion of Dora being reappointed to her position.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Hook?
Yeah.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you. Just do a, we have our bill list, we'll accept the motion to approve claims for payment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Hook?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Steeler?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Uh, we have a lot of proclamations here tonight, I'm just gonna go, not quickly, but just to note. One, earlier this evening, we had Dr. Holcraft, congratulations to her on her loan service to to Hopewell Valley. June fifth, our Timberlake Mill School is once again participating, and this year will be at the old school Baptist meeting house. Again, for a Witness Stone installation project, and we have a proclamation recognizing that fantastic historic effort. Also, this past end of last year, the Old School Baptist Meeting House received both their federal and state. Designations as a historic place on those both lists, which is fantastic, so we are commemorating them. And then finally, June, we recognize as prime material in Hopewell Borough as well. Do these, I forget now, do these need a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, by by administrative fiat of the mayor, let it be done. Next.
Can I just say, if you haven't gone to a Witness Stone installation, you should definitely go, it is super cool. What time is you in, fit, oh, let me look.
I.
Yeah, I just thought for the, you know, oh, sorry, for the general public.
It's a really great project that the Mill School does.
I think it's a Thursday or something like that.
It is a Thursday.
Yeah, I have it nine thirty to eleven.
Nine thirty, okay, at the meeting house.
Yes, it's, it's, it's.
Very cool.
Okay. Uh, so with that, we'll move into our council liaison reports. Anthony, you wanna go first?
Yes, as ever, so the Board of Health update, we met on Wednesday twenty third of May last week. We talked already about the prestrap ordinance, what will happen with that. We had a new member join the board, it was Amy Mann, who I think many people know as a borough resident, also a school nurse. The board expressed a gratitude to the council for agreeing to pay for their membership of the Local Boards of Health Association. Apparently it's quite important, because I didn't realize this, but in New Jersey, the state doesn't really coordinate public health issues, so it's all down to local committees, so. Their ability to interact with others is really quite important, so they're grateful for the sixty five dollars that we.
Now, no, with that, two and a half cents.
Yeah, exactly, that's where it went, yeah. They did ask in particular if we could help them to improve their visibility on the borough websites. So the website, I think they feel is a little bit.
You can.
Careful now.
Yeah, exactly.
As well, this could be a better too.
They would like to have more dynamic visibility and presence in public eye. There's a lot of events, like the ones like this night, which really should be advertised in a timely way. And right now, that really can't be done, so they'd like some assistance doing that if possible. Regarding more specific health matters, so the health officer mentioned that there'll be. An MOU of Capital Health to partner on health education activities. Department of Health does have a nurse who can deliver health education, but obviously this would be better to to collaborate with. An institution like Capital Health to offer more services. And then finally, just to report that. As I think many people know, there've been some reductions in government spending, federal government spending. And that has actually impacted the Board of Health at the local level, they've lost about seventy thousand dollars in grants that came from federal government. The state level is much more significant, but it does go to show that. Obviously, what pays a public health board is quite a complex mix of different sources of funding.
Thank you. Anthony, you go next.
Um, sure, yeah. Um, the Hopewell Borough Green Team, the, we are gonna be hosting another Zero Waste Community Potluck on Sunday, June first, from five to seven at the train station. Hope it won't be under renovation yet, I should say, correct? It won't be under renovation yet. Correct? It won't be under renovation yet. Yes. Um, it will be, that will go out in the email blast, um, and is also, it's already up on the Hopewell Valley Green Team website under events. And people, we really want to encourage people to RSVP to this one. We, all the registrants on the RSVP, there is a sustainable prize drawing. Um, so there are prizes for people who register, you know, who's drawing, and have five winners. Um, and the, these are all, this is all funded, by the way, by a PS, a Sustainable Jersey grant through the PSENG Foundation. Um, we also are announcing a Rutgers, Rutgers Master Gardeners of Mercer County is going to be hosting a composting workshop for beginning composters on Saturday, June seventh, from ten to eleven thirty AM. Um, we coordinated this in response to a desire to see more composting in the borough. And so through that PSENG grant, residents who complete the workshop will be handed a twenty five dollar coupon that will be good for any sustainable landscaping supplies. And we have made arrangements with, with My Backyard at Nectars, Rosedale Town and Country, and Stony Brook Gardens. Um, residents will be able to turn in those coupons. They will be as good, as good as cash when buying sustainable landscaping supplies. And then the borough will be able to reimburse those funds using the Sustainable Jersey grant money. So it's all funded by, um, the PSENG and Sustainable Jersey. Um, and the Borough Green Team will be, have a presence at the Hopewell Farmers Market on both Sunday, May eleventh and Sunday, June eighth. Um, we're shooting for the second Sundays. Um, we will be doing the same recycling that the, um, Valley Life Green Team does at the Pennington Farmers Market, and that happens on the fourth, the Pennington Farmers Market, the fourth Saturday of each month. We are going to be doing the second Sun, the second Sundays in May and June, and we hope to do more if we have enough volunteers. Um, and so we've also invited like the Shade Tree Commission to join us, and if other folks want, you know, borough folks want to join us at that table. Um, and if you can go onto the Green Team website to see all the items that can be recycled at those events. Um, these events and more will be going out in a townwide mailer, also funded by that PSENG Sustainable Jersey grant. Um, so that will be going into everybody's mailboxes probably by the end of next week is what we're shooting for. Um, and the Open Space Committee, um, we met, we have nothing really new to report. A lot happens in the executive session, but once we have more to report, um, you know, it's just my, my second time, um. And I would say I also serve on communications, but I assume Ryan will be sharing that. We do have the website now, but Ryan doesn't take that one.
I, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Uh, one, one question, um, I know was said before, can you remind everyone the date for the Mocktail Crawl?
Oh, yes. The Mocktail Crawl is Saturday, May tenth. It's a downtown Hopewell event. Um, it is this Saturday before Mother's Day. Um, and there are still tickets available, um, at downtownhopewell.com. Um, yeah, that's, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi. Okay, so, um, the Library Board is meeting on May sixth, um, just moving forward with a lot of great events as always there. Um, they are going to, this is going to be a handmade Hopewell. We'll have a table there and some, um, volunteer, um, you know, uh, trying to get more volunteers to help them there. Um, one of the things the Recreation Committee, uh, is working on, we're meeting on May twelfth. We're getting prepared for Cruz Night on the sixteenth. Uh, Memorial Day Parade on the twenty fifth. And, um, as Ryan mentioned, the Old Baptist Meeting House, uh, got their national historic registration designation. So there's a celebration at the meeting house on May thirty first. Um, we also have put together a street closure proposal for Columbia Ave on, um, Halloween night that was, uh, brought up by members of the Rec Committee and, uh, concerned parents, um, and families in town. So basically, um, I don't know Ryan how we handle this, but, um, it's going to be, uh, you know, a kind of a community effort, right? Where we have, um, accommodation of, uh, the police and the EMTs and, um, local, uh, residents, you know, blocking the, uh, the cross streets of Columbia Ave with their cars. So it's going to create basically a, a holiday, a Halloween zone and a safe corridor for trick or treaters and their families. Because as we all know, Columbia Ave is the hotspot in town. There's over five hundred trick or treaters there every Halloween and this will.
Over six hundred last year.
Six hundred, okay. And I know there's people on, on there that click all night and actually keep track of exactly how many come. I could personally not buy that much candy, but, um, I think, uh, Ryan has expressed some interest in participating. And, uh, so I think it's gonna be, it's gonna create a, a nice fun, um, activity for the, um, town. And then, um.
Before you off that, uh, apology to interject, but I just want to thank everyone involved in, in thinking this through. Um, this is a, a really interesting initiative, but I just want to stress and, and step back and reflect that, you know, we had a subcommittee working with, um, uh, residents on that street initially at the suggestion. Really, really appreciate the, uh, connection, uh, and work of our Hopewell Township Police Department, our first responsible fire department, to think through and put a lot of time and effort into, and, and particularly Administrator Doug, um, into something that would work and be safe, uh, for, for families on a very busy area and exciting area, uh, for Halloween. Uh, and as we get closer to Halloween, there'll be a lot of communications, uh, to residents about what to expect. Uh, you know, what to do with your car, how to allow for emergency exits and things like that. Uh, but, uh, really, really excited to see that come together and thank everybody involved in putting it together.
Thanks to Sherry for helping coordinate with the EMT on that too, so. Um, and that's it. We have personnel building, uh, committee meetings next week. That's it. Thank you.
Sherry, you go next.
Wondering if there's a, a tax amendment for those of us that live on Columbia?
No, it's a grant you make.
Uh, EDC, you guys saw the, uh, really amazing work. Is that, that one major relies you want to work that went into it. There was so much collaboration and, um, Ethan has dragged us into the digital age, well, I should say me, uh, but with collaborative online tools and it, and it just, it was great. And, and behind those three action items are twelve more that, uh, it just, it really, it was really impressive feat that they achieved, so. Um, the Fire Department Pancake Breakfast is this Sunday, eight to noon. And then you can go to Handmade Hopewell right down the street afterwards. Uh, Fire Department had thirty two calls in March. EMT had fifty three and their average reaction time was four and a half minutes, which is incredible. They serve, they serve, they go up to, they go to Titusville, they go down to Ewing, they go to Amwell, so they're just incredible. And the Fire Department had a wilderness rescue where they rescued a woman who was a mile into a path and they had to set up like a, like a daisy chain of rescuers to get her back out because they couldn't fit anything down the path. So it's got her working hard, all volunteers. So go buy some pancakes. Uh, Senior Center is having a NJ Stay Tax Talk. NJ Stay is a program for, uh, homeowners sixty five and over to get a pretty sizable tax break. So they're having a talk about that May. That was tomorrow. It's May?
It's May, I know.
Tomorrow, right, May second from ten to twelve at Municipal Building. And they're starting to give us some computer classes. Ethan, I think it might tell some, uh, for the elderly newsletter. And then finally Shade Tree, we had our kindergarten planting on Friday for, uh, Earth Day. We planted a swamp oak in the park next to where the, you know, they get to clear a bunch of trees. And, uh, as a reminder, we're having another tree planted on Saturday for Suzanne Poecrop at ten AM, I think, on Saturday.
Yeah, so there's the park cleanup that somebody mentioned. So if anybody wants to come out and help bring their tools, um, Sky's gonna be there with his baton, but not any electric. And, uh, we're gonna plant a tree and do some cleaning up and hopefully prep the bridge to get painted too.
One, one, um, I won't myself be attending, but we said the, the senior program that's tomorrow, is it, is it our municipal building or the township?
Sorry, township, municipal, yeah, sorry.
There's gonna be a rush on the building here. Thank you.
For a computer class.
Okay, yeah. David, what do you have?
Yeah, um, on, on water, I guess the main thing, it, it, still working on, uh, some analysis that will be presented at our the twenty ninth, um, public outreach session, um. Well, not every, we're not presenting all of it in one day. Pretty much in-depth analysis of, of water rates, New Jersey Americans and ours, and actually retrospective analysis going back fifteen years to see what the trends are in both. Um, and at the same time, we're working on Doug and I and the, the team and, um, and our financial advisor on, um, forecasting for what our future budgetings are likely to be over the next ten years, taking into account capital needs, uh, things that we know we have to do. Uh, and what those impacts are likely to be on our rates. Uh, and all of this will be presented, um, hopefully advantageable by its, um, as we go forward. Um, haven't figured out exactly, um, I, I think this next session, I'm envisioning it's gonna be focusing mostly on that retroactive analysis, but not sure, we, we just don't want to overload people, but the idea is put together the graphics, make the presentations for the team, our professionals, whoever's involved. Get all that information up on the website so people can go through it at their own pace and at their leisure and keep doing that. So each time we present one, publicly, then we would post it and make it available so everybody can digest it. And that's pretty much all I've got. We're coming up on another PFOX sampling that. I have to go check the date, but anyway, that'll be this month.
Please.
Thank you. Krista?
Uh, we met with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission earlier today to talk about the North Greenwood Traffic Calming Project. We are on schedule. We are now looking to procure it, so we will hopefully get the materials soon. And it looks like Elizabeth Town should be wrapping up their project in time for us to continue the installation as planned. Um, again, design is finalized and, yeah, I think we're all, we're all good on that. We're going to have a survey present at both sites with a QR code so that if you are walking there, you can get more information about the project. Um, the efficacy of these traffic calming measures, data on that, and also leave some feedback for us so that we can take that into account. Um, the DVR PC has been doing traffic counts, so there will be before counts and after counts, and we'll be able to see the difference between the two. Um, and then second, oh, um, there's a Mercer in Motion Conference coming up at the end of the month. Looking forward to going to that. Um, just excited to represent Hopewell Borough and have a seat at the table there. We already have a pretty good relationship with our partners at the county, but looking forward to, you know, making this connection stronger.
Thank you. A couple of things for me. I just want to thank the Hopewell Township Police, uh, particular, preferably new for us, but particularly this past week for their show of confirmation and support, um, for our local policies and the state of New Jersey's Immigrant Trust Directive, Directive. Uh, which is the document that governs requests from federal authorities to our local police when it comes to immigration enforcement. And it's our state's policy there that, that, that governs, and I just appreciate them reconfirming, um, where we all are with that. Um, particularly in this week's events. Uh, I want to thank our COA Subcommittee. We met, um, this month and are advancing our fourth round Affordable Housing Plan and distributed a copy to council. From a scheduled perspective, uh, it will be discussed, but not necessarily be a public hearing at next week's planning board meeting. And we made available, uh, with the agenda likely for that, there'll be a public hearing in June before planning board. And then it'll come back to council in June, uh, for adoption. And this is all part of our state required schedule for our fourth round, uh, Affordable Housing, uh, plan. I wanna, uh, we took action tonight, but just we've confirmed our engagement of our search consultant with regards to our administrator position. Um, I want to thank everyone with their patience, uh, with the Elizabeth Town Gas projects that are coming. Um, now we're doing our best to keep up with their schedule and changes to it, uh, and, you know, the closures of, and, and trash have been a bit of a moving target, uh, say the least, but, uh, just want to thank everyone for their patience. And if something's missed or, uh, concerning, reach out to Town Hall and we'll do our best to, to figure out and, and, you know, if it's trash, to get trash rescheduled. Not all the agenda tonight necessarily, but we'll be probably at our next meeting, but as, uh, I don't know, someone alluded to, uh, with our website, we'll be selecting a new vendor for a event website soon. So excited to transition that, our, our current site to a new platform that has a, uh, better tools for, um, communicating ability for different types of alerts. Uh, you know, prompts when, for agenda updates and, and things like that. Um, and we'll thank Krista, uh, Heidi and Doug in particular for their hard work on that one. Uh, and then our, um, quite, almost need to get one of those deli ticket, take a number of things. There are a lot of people came this week for, uh, Mayor's Hours this Wednesday. The next, uh, opportunity, aside from just reaching out to, to me or anyone here, frankly, if you want to talk, but, uh, my, my next, uh, drop in hours will be Saturday, the tenth at, at nine o'clock here at, uh, at Borough Hall. Doug, wanna?
Just have a few things. Uh, we closed out the twenty twenty one Railroad Avenue, uh, DOT grant, so that we bring another eighty thousand to the borough. Uh, railroad station, uh, repointing is getting fired up. So what we're gonna do is while they're, we don't have a firm date when the new start, but while they're doing the work on the first floor, we'll be open seven days a week. Uh, the firehouse, but the, the railroad station will be open. Uh, once they start working on the second floor, then it'll only be open on weekends. So once we, once we get that scheduled, we're good, um, we'll get that to everybody. Kristina will know what's going on, so when she's booking at Hart Avenue as well on Dewey. Um, look, it's really coming out nicely, doing a good job out there. Um, next meeting, we'll have a resolution on the agenda, uh, for council to approve for our twenty twenty five NJ DOT grant submission. And we're looking to do seminary first and second. So that'll be. Uh, we're working with Ronnie and she got to go ahead with her team, um, for the funds that come from the Betty Johnson. And they're gonna do, they're gonna start the front of the building, the columns, so we'll get that going. And just, uh, Boswell Engineering is working, I met with them a couple of times. They're working on preparing quotes for formal parking and traffic calming study that we talked about, um, on, uh, on Broad Street. So hopefully I'll have something for you next month. Uh, you know, the end of this month for you guys to look at it. Maybe we can, you know, close it on the fifth and get that work going, okay? And, uh, I'll leave it there.
Um, one other one, uh, just, um, scrolling down to the calendar. We have this year set in each month, a second council meeting in, in most months. This month, we have scheduled one for the fifteenth. And I, I think we discussed that we'll be, uh, able to cancel it. So the official notices will go up on the website, but for those of you who follow home or follow announcements or listeners here, our next meeting will be the June fifth meeting. We will cancel um, tentatively scheduled, or previously scheduled, May fifteenth, second meeting. Alright, with that, I'll open the meeting to the public, uh, for our, our, our final, uh, speaking opportunity here in person, uh, and online.
Got one more, North Avenue, just a question. Is this the appropriate time to ask about the ordinance concerning repaving my street? Over to that next session.
I, I mean, the, the ordinance is technically about the funding mechanism. So if you have a question about timing or anything, now's a great time to ask.
I'm just curious if there's any considerations to putting a, a, uh, traffic calming on that road, because people do cut from the alley up to Broad to get the light and they do right up there. And a nice little bump would slow them down, I think.
I don't know that's been considered before, but thank you, that's it. Okay, that's all. Take a look at that. Thank you. Seeing one in person, and I don't see any hands raised on the online. I'll take a motion to close the, uh, second public session. Is that active? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll then take a motion to adjourn our meeting, again noting that our next meeting of council will be on June fifth. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank everyone for, uh, for tuning in.